Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which the states, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here. Do Spencer's reading of the minutes?
Third order, 3A tax assessors' results report for hearing date held January 11, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B minutes of the Scranton-Lacwanna Health and Welfare Authority's regular board meeting held October 20, 2016.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting to be held February 8, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do council members have any announcements at this time? I have two. There will be a public hearing next Thursday, February 9th, at 5:45 in Council Chambers for Item 5B on tonight's agenda, closing and vacating portions of South Irving and Crown Avenue between Saginaw and Connell Streets. Also, there will be a fundraiser for the West Grant Little League this Friday at, from 7 to 10, at Big Z Bar at 1420 Lafayette Street. As everyone is aware, they had a fire there last week, so they're going to need some help replacing their concession stand before the season starts.
Fourth, excuse me, fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz?
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, and Scranton resident and taxpayer. Just so we're all keeping track, there are 278 days left until the general election on November 7th, and we're all looking forward to the results of the Arcataz study on storm water analysis. Also, there are 148 days until June 30th, the deadline for the 2016 audit. I'm really looking forward to that one. With regard to the LST tax, I know there's a hearing scheduled for February 13th. I still think, though, that we should not wait for the results of that. You should be mulling over in your minds a Plan B, as should the administration, should there be any problem with that LST tax. If that were cut back to $52 a year instead of the triple tax, that's like a $3 million loss of revenue that we had predicted, so I would like to see a Plan B at least tossed around in your mind. It'd be good news if we get it, but if we don't, it'll be a problem. During fifth order, if you would please update the public on the status of your webpage, since we've been waiting for that for some time. Also, what is the status of pending legislation or any legislation with regard to pension reforms? I haven't seen anything about that for a long, long time. In addition, I'm still looking for the RFP for the third-party administration of the pension plans. I haven't seen that.
My understanding is that's going to be coming down shortly.
Good. It's long overdue. Also, when will the public be made aware of the plan for the distribution of the sewer sales proceeds? How far down in the year are we going to get that kind of information? Is that going to be relatively soon, or is that going to be summertime?
I would expect that in the first quarter.
First quarter?
Yeah.
Okay. Any change on our rental registration legislation?
The lawsuit, you mean?
Not just the lawsuit, but are we just in a holding pattern until that lawsuit's resolved?
No, I think they're moving ahead with the new ordinance.
Okay, and is that going to be maybe first quarter?
The new bills are going to be mailed out soon.
Okay. All right. Like many people, I was saddened to read about Mr. Boskov's medical condition this morning. However, as you recall, several years ago, when he attempted to retire, he had to come back into the company because his department store chain got in real trouble, almost had to declare bankruptcy. So my question is, if he has to withdraw or something happens to him, and you've got to remember, he is the genius behind that chain of department stores. He is the number-one reason for their financial success. When he goes, whether it's simply to retire for medical reasons or he passes away, I'd be very concerned about the future of that chain, as well as our anchor store at the marketplace. What would happen to the marketplace if that store had to close? That's another thing you should be looking at, because we've put a lot of eggs into that basket, and I'm wondering what the ultimate impact would be on city coffers if Boskov's department store ever had to close, at least in the near future. And just to make everyone smile today, I got my property tax bill, and I was, as I expected, there was no change in my city tax, there was no change in my county tax, but my school tax went down. So when you get your property tax bills, everyone should compare their tax totals to last year, and hopefully everyone will get the same pleasant surprise. Thank you.
Jeff Zick?
How are you doing? This is for the council members. I'm going to ask for a little help from Mandy, my fiancee, if that's fine. She is going to hold up the pictures depicted in case the camera wanted to catch what I'm talking about here. All right. First thing we have is Scranton's police badge, the narcotics badge. I mean, it is 2017, and hence is now legal in the state of Pennsylvania. You know, your town wants to collect taxes off of illegal medical cannabis business. And what message does this narcotics badge send to the public? You know, that hemp is heroin, medical cannabis involves needles, cannabis causes death, you know, why the child is skull. Every other badge on here is pretty professional, and it's a great police department, and I'm not badgering police here, they do a great job. Second page is a recent WNEP poll talking about Wilkes-Barre's decriminalization. Wilkes-Barre has already decriminalized paraphernalia. Scranton still charges for roach papers as paraphernalia. Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Harrisburg, and State College have already decriminalized small amounts of cannabis. Redding, West York, Lancaster, Stroudsburg, and Wilkes-Barre are considering ordinances. Scranton, as the progressive city, should probably take the lead and enact its own ordinance. And the third page is Scranton Cannabis Possession Arrests, 2010 through 2016. Ninety-four arrests times $1,266 per arrest, which is Rand Corporation estimate, equals $119,000, up 51% from 2015. Six years cost the city $743,880. All right, page four. Page four, black and white arrests in the city of Scranton. This is rather disturbing. I didn't know this until I crunched some numbers. All right, whites make up 78.6% of Scranton's population. They account for 62% of 2016's arrests of small possession of cannabis. Blacks make up 6% of the city, but account for 38% of possession arrests. I don't find that all right, and I'm sure nobody in this room finds it all right. I'm not going to even ask for a show of hands. All right. Page five, opiate and cocaine possession arrests in the city. Cannabis users are 64% more likely to be arrested in 2016 than opiate and cocaine users combined. What is Scranton's priorities? All right. Page six, the top 10 Lacwanna County cannabis arresting cities in 2016. Scranton fuels the war on cannabis at 38% of all arrests in Lacwanna County. Scranton is supposed to be the progressive city. This sounds regressive. Scranton accounts for 0.6% of the statewide population. Scranton's cannabis possession arrests account for 3.4% of the state's possession arrests. This is 550% more likely for a person to be arrested here in Scranton than anywhere else in the state for cannabis possession. Scranton is on record pace this year for arrests of small amounts of cannabis. January, new numbers came out, they arrested 14 adults. You times that, times 12 months, that's 144 arrests this year. 144 arrests times $1,266 is around $180,000. You spent $17,724 not writing tickets. Philadelphia, Harrisburg, Pittsburgh already do this. The sky's not falling on their heads. I'm not saying Scranton, I love Scranton. I'm moving to Scranton in a week. I'm going to become, I pay taxes as a worker here, I'm going to be paid taxes as a citizen. This is something that I don't want, I thought, I'd never see my children go through this. This is something we can take care of. I would like a meeting between the mayor, council, and the district attorney, if we can take care of this. That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Zick.
Vay Ferrantis, Scranton. First, I'd like to say, I think it's, I hope you approve the legislation for the Lacwanna Harriers Trail, about the big flashing lights, because that's a very, it's a big safety hazard on Elm Street. It's, and even on Broadway, if they could possibly someday get one there on Broadway. The Lacwanna Harriers Trail is phenomenal. It gives everybody someplace to go, exercise, biking, walking, taking their dog. I mean, they, there's so much exercise, and it's so healthy, and it's a beautiful, beautiful trail. Natalie Gelb should be highly commended for the work that she's done on this trail and her workers. It's positively beautiful, and I hope that you approve this, because it's very much so needed. Mr. Wexler, last week I heard that you mentioned about, you were going to send a letter to Jason Schreiber to get some information. You were hoping he would get it, and Billy Gahn mentioned, get the right to know, and you suggested that that wouldn't be good, because it would take 30 days, and it's like a stall tactic, you said, like they would put it off. Well then, I'd like to know, how come you tell all of us when we have a question, do a right to know? I know why. Because, because first of all, you don't want to get us the answers, because you don't want us to know. So we get to do a right to know, and then whoever's in charge of that, they don't ever reply. And Richard Schumacher must have ten rights and knows that never got answered. Then you say, go to the state. There's more stall tactics. So it's more of not letting the people know what's going on in the city. Mr. Evans, on purpose, by the way. Mr. Evans, is that, for the garbage fee, is that 10% still going to be, is going to be $30 off if you pay it by the first time?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Last week you mentioned a little spin, asked and answered. You said that anybody asks me a question, I go and I get the answer. Well, I've been asking you for two years, if not longer, and I have all the minutes of the meetings and all the tapes to prove it, that I've been asking you time after time, and you know this, how much money was coming in for the garbage fee and how much money was being paid out. You never, ever gave me an answer. Then you said there was going to be a study, because the DPW didn't have their records, so you're going to do a study. Well, the study, they got their money in June. They didn't start it till December. Now, you said you couldn't, you didn't have any say as to when they were going to do it. You do have a say, because you're council, you're the ones that wanted that study. You certainly could pick up that phone and say, hey, where's this study? When you told me about this study way back, way back, like a year ago, you said you wanted to get this study, so for this year's budget, this year's budget, it would be less than $300. But they didn't even start the study till December. I swear, that's on purpose, too, so they know they could get the $300 for this year's budget again.
I can't interest the motivation of why the study didn't get done sooner. I will tell you that I pressed for the study from the time we knew about it till the time it was enacted.
Well, it wasn't enacted soon enough to get the money over for this year's budget.
I will agree with you 100%. It wasn't enacted soon enough.
No, it wasn't. Now, when you mentioned about there was an account, that the garbage fee has a special account for all the money that the people pay to go into that account.
Yes.
Could you possibly, please, get me the disbursements of that account?
Sure.
Okay, could I, as soon as possible?
Well, yeah, within a, yeah, within a reasonable manner. Over the next few weeks, I'll try to get that answer for you.
Thank you. As many disbursements as you can. Oh, let's see. Did you find out yet when Mayor Courtright knew about this $30 million shortfall in the sewer authority sale to the water company? Did he ever answer any of you as to when he knew about this?
We found out when we opened the newspaper.
When did he know?
I don't know. We found out when we read it in the newspaper.
Oh, I know that, but when, did anybody, you were supposed to ask Mayor Courtright. I know you've said this a couple times.
That's one of the questions we have with the...
But when you read those questions that you wrote, the whole list of letters, the questions, that was not one of them?
I sent that to him specifically from myself, and I had not received an answer.
Well, you, Bill, don't expect it, because he has never answered you yet. But that's outrageous. So that should just tell you, he knew about it long before you did, and he didn't want the people to know. Same thing with the, I got my tax bill, it was like $34 less, which is wonderful, but next year we're going to get clobbered, because the only reason we don't have a tax increase this year is so Billy Courtright could get elected. Don't be fooled, people. Billy Courtright is a shady, shady person. He's doing this on purpose. Next year you will get slammed with taxes to make up for this year. Don't let that fool you. Now, on the corner, oh, first, one more thing about the garbage fees. How many means, now, you said many, many means. Do you know how many means have gone out so far?
No, I do not.
Could you please find that out for me? Okay, at the corner of Broadway, not Broadway, I live there, I think I know, on the corner of Railroad and Luzerne, you know, where the pizza place is on the corner? When you're coming down Railroad Avenue at Luzerne, when you turn left, there's a traffic light there, right? Four corners, traffic light, on two on Railroad, both sides of Luzerne, at the intersection. But right next to the traffic light, as you turn the corner left, there's another traffic light that faces a building, it faces a house. You can't see it from Railroad Avenue, you can't see it from 5th Street. And when you go 5th Street, one-way street, go on to Luzerne Street, at the stop sign there, the traffic light, you can't even see it, it's there for nothing. It goes into a house, where you saw it. You can't see it from the corner, and you can't see 5th Avenue, so nobody could see it unless you're standing in front of that person's house. In other words, the cost of a traffic light, I'm sure, is very expensive. What is it doing there? There's four traffic lights in that corner, you don't need it. And you can't see it from any direction, unless you're standing right in front of that house. So is there any way you could get that out of there, so maybe somebody else could use it? I mean, it makes no sense. Could somebody just look at that, and you'll see what I mean? Go through the corner of Railroad and Luzerne, look at that other traffic light on the pole, on a building or whatever.
Thank you. Bob Bolus?
Bob Bolus, Scranton. Now, last week we brought up for financial advisory services provided to the city of Scranton, connection with the general obligation notes of $725,000. Anybody have an explanation? A million five to Conneboy to do an agreement on the garage sale? $725,000 down whatever this is for advisory? So you guys are here. Why do we need an advisory committee? You're supposed to be the brains of the city and the guy downstairs. You don't need advisories to know what we're doing, that we're in a very serious issue and you're squandering money? Five million, whatever, $6 million to the mall for parking spaces so people could come park free at the expense of every one of us? Did you need advisory to tell you how to do that? Did you, could you tell me what the, oh, boy, could you tell me what the sewer authority cost our legal fees? Because everything we get is all blocked off. There aren't no records for the public records. Mr. Wexler, you have an answer with the sewer authority legal fees we're being charged?
For the past three weeks, we've been talking about how we're working on getting those answers. I'm not sure if you missed that. We're having a meeting with Mr. Schreiber on the 10th to get the answers.
But answer me a question. Why didn't you understand what it was before the sewer authority was sold?
Because the sewer authority conducted the negotiations, the sewer authority and the water company. We did not have anything to do with it.
But we're getting the money that we don't have. Somebody has to know the legal fees, there's bring-down sheets.
We were not involved, we were not involved in that portion of the deal.
What was the hourly rate for Conneboy on the garage sale?
Once again, you're going backwards.
I'm going all over the place here, because there's millions of dollars being thrown down the toilet here, and no matter what direction I go in, I may admit that you, you're the council president, you're the spokesman for the group, then you should have these numbers. I shouldn't have to ask you twice, and I shouldn't have to go all over the ballpark.
Well, Mr. Bolus, that's...
You should know what's going on, Mr. Wexler.
I do, I do.
Well, if you do know, then what's his hourly fee?
This is your time to comment. This is your time to comment.
Wait, don't tell me what my time is, I'm a public...
You are, you're doing it, go ahead.
I'm in a public, and I'm asking you for what his hourly fee was.
Your question, you can ask all the questions you like, but this is your comment period, so continue.
Well, we'll get to you in a bit. So Gahan, you were in the paper complaining about this, that, and the other, about the sales and all, yet you signed the recovery plan. You know where you're going to be sold. You guys agreed to do it. Now you're crying about it? Didn't you pay attention to what was going on? Mr. Wexler can't give a straight answer, and nobody else can. Yet you're complaining on how much you guys squandered all this money, and you have no accountability. You buy parking garage spaces in a mall, you basically should have owned the mall, yet you won't reassess it, you won't go after the nonprofits, you'll do absolutely zero to increase the tax base in the city, yet you guys are blowing money all day long. And you have no idea what you're talking about. And that's what's upsetting me. But when it came to my containers on East Mountain, Mr. Wexler knew everything about them, because he was part of the deal to get rid of them and try and move them and cost the city thousands of dollars.
I disagree, Mr. Bolus. I had nothing to do with that.
Yeah, you did. You had a lot to do with it, okay? Mr. Wexler, you had quite a bit to do with it. So let's not put that under the rug. I know what goes on.
It's definitely not under the rug, no.
Yeah, well, you knew what was going on, and so did your other members that were up there.
As a councilperson, I didn't know what was going on.
That's right, but you cost the city thousands of dollars, and it's going to continue.
I was not involved as a member of the residents' association.
Look, you guys have cost us millions, not thousands, millions, and yet you're not showing any way you're going to pay the future debt off. Now, one single iota, could you tell us how you're going to pay the future debt without putting the screws to the people in the city and the businesses? You have no clue, you have no ideas. You got contracts in front of you. Are you qualified to understand them and read them? $175,000 for advisory? Didn't they tell you what legal fees would be? Didn't they tell you what the outcome would be? Didn't you ask questions that you could give us answers, instead of seeing blank papers, blank sheets? Yet you want to run this city, you want to run this, what are you running? What are you leading? That's what bothers me. You're supposed to be leaders, you're supposed to understand what you're doing here, yet I don't see a single thing you've done here that you understand. And that's the problem I have here. You know...
Mr. Bolus, if we're going to do this every week, you're allowed to finish your thought, you're not allowed to start a new thought.
Mr. Wexler, let me tell you something. I'm going to see that both you and Mr. Gahan have a trailer, because the city and the people in this community have to know what a dictator's about and what you've done to this city, whether you like it or not.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
And I'll show you what free speech really is.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
Because you're the last person that should sit in that seat, because you don't respect the people.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
You only respect who you think you are.
Mr. Bolus, thank you very much.
And that's a sad thing for you.
Don't thank me, because you're going to regret ever thanking me for anything. Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
But you will understand the power of the people.
Mr. Bolus, I'm not going to go back and forth...
Have a good night, Wexler.
I do believe in the power of the people.
Then you just watch what happens.
That, I look forward to it. It's a campaign, that's why we have elections. No, we're done, we're done.
If you think the people on these cameras are stupid to know that you don't understand what's going on in this city...
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
You got another thought coming.
Thank you very much, sir. Is this Gary Donato? Greg Donato, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Greg Donato, I live in West Pittston. I just wanted to ask permission or how we go forward on, we've had an advertising business, my aunt and grandfather and great-grandfather, since 1915. We do bench advertising, and it adds to commerce and functionality around the city. Everything is geared towards business and commerce and being fair and reputable to businesses. And I was wondering if we, you know, how we can go about starting that up in Scranton area. We do it in Wilkes-Barre and surrounding areas in Luzerne County. And we have, we've been doing it for a long, long time, and I would just like to ask permission if we can start up in the Scranton area.
Do you have a catalog, or do you have like a customer testimony or anything? Because we're kind of the starting point for that, and we can take a look at what you have, and then we can start either working it into the parks or wherever that could go. So whatever you might have, Mrs. Reed is our city clerk.
Okay.
So any information, she would be your starting point, and then, you know, we're all anxious to see any improvements that we can bring to the city.
Wonderful. I will talk to her.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ron Elman?
No fighting tonight with you. Last night, I was having a couple cocktails at the club. When I went to the bathroom, this, people talk to me in the bathroom all the time for some reason. A fellow was talking about acquiring the new property and all the work it needed and all. And he told me, I don't know where he lived, but it was in that area, he said, he didn't want to look and see a bunch of fired trucks and automobiles and all. He said they never had that problem when the Army Reserve was there. I have no idea what's going on, but to me, it's acquiring another muddy pit when we can't fix fire stations. You know, there was a big article in the paper about all the work the fire stations Well, this was just a brief encounter about that. I know I've mentioned a couple times those 6,000 foreclosures. I'm not talking about the house foreclosures. There's, if you go through that list, there's hundreds upon hundreds of properties owned by realtors and developers. This one guy, Talariqo, he got dozens of properties here in the city. He owes $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 on each one. His name is all over that sheet. I think I mentioned this once before. Just four people I got here, four people now owe $900,000. These are companies. Scranton Investors... Scranton Investors on Boulevard, $484,000. This, this is, who ever heard of getting away with this? They come out to my house when I paid the taxes twice, and I can't get, I think it's $1,800 or something. I, I, I've never seen nothing like it. Here's a man, $484,000, nobody bothers him. Under him, I got this Winter Manor Realty, $141,000. Thomas Hill, $161,000. Ed Langer, $100,000. Why can't you condemn their properties? They're rented out, they're making income, why can't these real estate licenses be taken away from them? You know, besides that, there's these same people are buying more property, they hide under this LLC. The same people that aren't paying for what they got are allowed to get more property. This, this is senseless, when the city is so broke. You know, we, we hear every week, we can't pay this, we can't pay that, and here is tens of millions of dollars sitting there that no one's collecting. Amosel's not very busy anymore, he sold the last thing we got. Why can't he do something? I, I understand his standing with the city too, but he could do something. What about Bizoni? $100,000, he doesn't have to pay any house taxes or school taxes? Why can't he do something about this? This, this is what's wrong with this city, it's just hundreds of thousands of dollars from each one of these people, and not, nothing's being done to collect it, nothing. The reason, you just can fall back on Amosel's plan to just raise taxes when we need something, we don't have to do any work and hard work and go after people, we'll just raise taxes on the rest of you. It's, it's gotten where there's just nowhere else to go for a lot of people, and you know it, but you don't do nothing. Has one of you done anything about those 60,000 foreclosures? Say, no. I brought it up a couple months ago. Millions of dollars sitting there, uncollected taxes. Like I said, take away their licenses and, and their real estate licenses, and condemn their houses and see how fast they pay. That, that Penswood Manor owes $55,000, they're loaded to the gill with people.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Well, thank you for letting me let off steam. See, I didn't get alpha on you tonight. I'll save it.
Good evening, counsel. Tonight, you know, I, I just would like to ask people to remember the exchange between Mr. Bullis and Mr. Wexler tonight, when Mr. Wexler said that you could, this is your five minutes, you can ask questions. And I think people have to understand why this council sits here. When elected officials move an agenda through a city, it has to be done legally and lawfully. It doesn't matter whether the people who sit on the council are competent or incompetent, as long as they legally hold the votes, they can make all the mistakes they want, and it's legal. And they don't have to answer any questions at all, they can just ignore you like they've done to the residents of this city for quite a few decades. And you know, the real problem is, you need to take a look into this much further. You know, a remarkable article was in the Scranton Times newspaper, and I'm just going to touch it in generalities, but there's three council members here sitting for reelection, and one of them is married to a former Democratic committee woman. And there were some questions about what was taking place at the school board. And I guess the question was, you know, with Mr. Sheridan sitting there, why didn't somebody do something with him? And this woman said that she couldn't take a chance on her husband's reelection chances here in the city. And you know, that says a lot about this city.
I think it says a lot about my wife.
Well, I, and that's up to you to take credit for that, but I think it just goes to show how corrupt and twisted this city is.
Mr. Morgan, I will not, I will not let you call my wife corrupt.
I didn't call your wife anything. I'm talking about a system.
I'm talking about a wife and a council person.
You know, Mr. Wexler, please sit there and be quiet, you're the council president, but I didn't say one word about your wife being corrupt, you did.
No, you stated about my wife, and then you said corrupt.
Do me a favor, stop my time, and then you carry on on your own.
You're carrying on, sir, not me.
No, I, I didn't say she was corrupt, you did. But you know, it just goes to show how twisted this system really is. All these residents, they're here, they're hunkered down, they're losing everything they own. You know, it's just a shame that a city's been distressed for 25 years, and we go further and further in. When Mr. McGough was president of council, I asked him to cut taxes by 30%, cut, cut expenses by 30%, nothing. Over all the course of this time, I want the residents to look around their neighborhoods, and look at the street signs, and see how many of them are faded and can't be read anymore. They were restoring your pride. And the millions and millions and millions of dollars pumped into city parks, they were restoring your pride. And the Scranton Sewer Authority? You know, I think the people need to take a good look and ask, who paid to plumb all the water into houses and all the sewer lines into houses? The people did. But who controls it now? Corporations, because they couldn't afford to do it. So now you elect people, and their only agenda is, they do exactly what they're told. Somebody tells them, and they do exactly what they're told, or they just don't know anything. Now, Mr. Wexler, you said that you were against the sewer deal, but you introduced it. You know, so somebody would have to ask, sir, how can you introduce an ordinance, or anything else for that matter, that you're opposed to? Because if you don't introduce it, it can't be voted on. And my problem is that, you know, you read all these articles and all this silliness, and it all comes from here. And this council and previous councils have destroyed this city, and they've done the same thing across this country, because we elect one political hack after another, who has no allegiance to the people at all. Not one drop, not one little speck of respect for the people who elect them. And like you said to Mr. Bullis here tonight, you've got five minutes to talk, but I'm not going to answer you. And nobody has come here and received an answer on just about anything. Because the people we elect, you don't have any answers. That's the problem. And every time after something happens, you turn around and say, well, I didn't know that. And the Home Rule Charter gives you a way to figure out everything that takes place in this city. But, like I said once before, you know, they put a space suit on a monkey, and he went around the world, okay, but he wasn't an astronaut.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. And I didn't call your wife corrupt, sir, you did.
Marie Schumacher. I haven't done a property transfer, or transactions report in a while, so I thought I'd start with that tonight. Since I stopped doing the detailed one roughly the mid-March of last year, of the properties that were sold, only 23% of them were in Scranton. And of the properties that did sell, 49% were sold at a price below the common level ratio. Unfortunately, it's, sales are up just a little bit, the first month, from the 31st of, of December until today, 29% of the properties that have been sold in the county were in Scranton, but of those, 62% of those were below the, the common level ratio. It's, it's really, really sad. And, and I think taxpayers are stressed, and you need to be aware of that. And with respect to 6B, I guess I want to go there next. I think it's disturbing. First of all, the, the $250,000 that you're voting on, was that in response to the request that was made last year for the state grant from the gaming funds, which was a request for $642,000? So we've really only gotten a little bit of it. Also, last year, there was a preliminary review received on the 1st of February, almost a year ago. It did not specify estimates of renovations. When did the final report come in? If that was a preliminary review, when, when did we receive the final review that includes that information?
I'm not sure, it was probably about four or five months ago.
Funny, nobody ever spoke about that. Did it, did it answer these, let me just go take a different tack then. Did it answer these questions? Did it include the specific need that this city has for a, for that building?
Not that I'm aware of.
Did it have a comprehensive environmental assessment? Yes, no?
Yeah.
Just a yes or no? Do we have one on the grounds of that building?
I've asked for it, and apparently it's in the law department, some sort of paperwork, so I'm, I did ask for that, but I don't have it on me.
But we, a, a comprehensive environmental assessment has occurred, and we know what the conclusion is, but you can't share it with us right now, is that-
I don't, I don't know if one has occurred, I've asked that question, and the chief said there's, there's something in the law department. What that means, I don't know, that's why I asked.
Well, I, okay, the third one, do we have a funding development plan and a detailed operational plan? As I recall, that first one said it needed a new roof, and there were just lots of, lots of things. I would certainly suggest that you put this on the back burner until we have the answers to all of these questions. I, I really think the last thing we need is to, to spend, it's really easy to spend, even I can do that. But making the cutbacks, not so much. Did we receive a, a response on the Scranton Sewer Authority?
No, I'm not sure if you didn't hear it, we're having a meeting with Director Shrive on the 10th.
The, the-
No.
I mean, hearing, I mean, here?
Councilman Evans and I are going to have a meeting, we sent the questions to, to Director Shrive last week. We've requested he get us an answer today. I spoke to him today, we're going to meet, we're going to meet with him on Friday, next week.
Are you going to get the answers to the questions?
That's the plan.
That's why we're having the meeting.
Okay, I, I don't recall what all those questions were, but the one I would like to know the answer, one of the many, is, did Jason Shrive receive any compensation over and above his city solicitor salary for the work that he did on that transaction?
I'll ask him that.
Thank you. And, okay, back up, speaking of, okay, if I may, the Airbnb, did you, you said you were going to investigate to see if we've only pursued one of the many in the city?
Yeah, I talked, I talked to Director Hinton, and he has responded to the complaints that have been received for other Airbnb situations, but they are not actively pursuing, going online and searching them out.
Why not, what other ordinance do we have on the books where you have to get a complaint from somebody before you send somebody out?
Marie, that was-
You know, that's troubled me this whole week. I just cannot believe, because this is, this is what happens when you get big government.
Yeah, I agree.
Big government, the small level, big, just pass any kind of law you want, and then don't enforce it for your friends, and go after, but make sure you've got it there, so if you want to go after one individual, you can zero in on them and ruin them.
That was your answer received.
And this is awful. I think that is a terrible way we're going, and I-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Uh, give me that bell. Give me that bell, young lady. Just kidding, but, uh, at any rate, it rang last week, and I kind of reviewed the meeting at home on Sunday night or whatever. One of the issues with insurance that I have is when indigent care is taken care of. It's not done in the past at government expense, it's done at policy premium expense. And a number of years back, Ed Rendell and George Bush were in the newspaper together, they were providing chip insurance with the excesses that were paid in the Blue Cross. And I'm certainly not against chip insurance, but the point is that you have this, this person expropriating, a politician expropriating money that somebody's paying out of their pocket. It might even be a sick person that's paying out the wazoo for this insurance, and then they're playing the hero for it, you know, like a Robin Hood or something, so that's what I wanted to say. Once again, the stormwater, I talked to somebody on the stormwater, and at this time, and I hope it's followed through, there won't be any stormwater rate for undeveloped land. I hope that stays the way it is, because once again, I got my taxes today for my spare lot, and they're, they went from 333 when I first bought the lot, they're up to over $600 a year. And every five years, I'm paying once over again to the city of Scranton and the county and the school district for that land. Or I lose it, and, you know, maybe I'll donate it to Hells Angels Motorcycle Club for a party center, if they don't behave themselves soon. The Sereni Center, Ma Schumacher brought this up, there was a pollution issue with the school. We're supposed to tear down or get rid of Autobahn School, and it turned out that that piece of land, because of the US military and all the nasties that they deal with in defense, wasn't suitable. So that's my major concern. I'm not against acquiring it, and we already have our vehicles, I've seen the newspaper and everything, and it's, but, uh, there and again, please don't stick us with the Superfund site and find out beforehand, because it could be, if you buy something and the land is polluted, a lot of times the owners, new owners get stuck with all of the problems from it over the years. And there was an editorial in the paper, I brought in the Times, last week it was mentioned that, the university's applying for a $5 million grant to improve a baseball field. Well, here's some nice statistics, we're about 60 million, is less than what it was before the Great Recession for public universities. And adjusted for inflation, it's less than 14 years ago. And when the system was founded in 1982, the state contributed 67%, 67% of the system's budget, and that has shrunk to 25%. So, the point is that we have a sectarian institution here, and I'm basically not a sectarian person, but it's a concern of mine. For instance, I mentioned on 501(c)(3) and (c)(4) and how they're getting away with a lot of improprieties. In 1958, the Congress wrote the IRS law currently in the, on the books, that 50, that they had to be strictly for- that they had to be strictly for public, uh, welfare, and it's, uh, the, uh, the Treasury Secretary or somebody changed it to primarily. So, some of these organizations are little less than, uh, are quite a bit less than, uh, primarily.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
So, uh, thank you and have a good night. Don't forget, we got INCS too, income and no kids, and HINCS, high income and no kids. So, Wayne, up in the Hill section, up in Southside, may they be all over, springing up, paying their taxes and not taking anything.
Anyone else?
Andy Spragge, says it's Scranton, fell Scrantonians. I got the little ad here saying Parking Plan Wizard who council unanimously adopts deal for the Parking Authority. Now, when you just go to the Neighborhood Association, do you ever tell them that that deal cost us over $150 to $200 million, either in lost revenue or liability? Do you tell the taxpayers of Scranton that you gave away that much money? No, I don't think you would, because then they would know exactly what was done. I'll give you a little breakdown. The fees and the parking revenue amounted to about $3 million a year. You gave it away for 40 years, that's $120 million down the drain. You borrowed another $30 to $33 million for what you call stranded debt. You gave, I think it's NDC, I think that's what it's called, a gift of $28 million in the form of lease. You gave a lease that we are responsible, the citizens of Scranton are responsible for the lease, and that adds on to the debt. So, when you go and explain to somebody, don't pat them on the back and pat their pockets at the same time. Tell them the actual cost of some of these deals that were done.
Mr. Spragley, I don't want to interrupt you, but we're having a hard time hearing with the mic, if you just want to adjust the mic and move it down a little bit. There you go, thank you.
Yeah, for some reason, it does come over. But that's some of the cost, not even the lawyer's cost. And the worst part about it, you keep bringing up the default. We paid two lawyers to arrange that default. That didn't just happen, that was created. And then you find fault. What happened? Why did we come out on the bad end of that stick after paying two lawyers to arrange it? Nobody knows. Or the, it was the other default that they keep bringing up that you don't mention, the default that you paid off, that $4 million to the bank that the Scranton Parking Authority did default on. Our default was arranged. I think it was, what, two days, three later, three days later, they got their money. Something is bad in the city. Something actually stinks in the city, but this deal stinks worse than any. They should have an investigation into this whole deal. I need proud about the gifts to Mr. Backley, $300 and some thousand dollars a year for 40 years. I'm not bringing that up. I'm not bringing in the gift of $2.5 million to the garage that was built at the same time as the mall, but you considered it only worth a dollar. I'm not going to bring that up. But somebody should bring it up in the state government, and how Pell can sit there and let that happen is beyond me. $200 million, I estimated the cost of that deal, and I know it's a lot more. I don't know how you can do it, but you all did it, and they have references here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Gary St. Fleur, Scranton resident. Um, just have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you, gentlemen. Are, are you aware that there was a response filed, um, to the courts regarding the Act 511 taxes last week Monday? Huh?
Asking us if we're, if we are aware there's a lawsuit filed?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Okay, um, were you aware of the ordinance that states that there's a cap on amount of local taxes?
Yes, I am.
Um, were you aware of it when Omaroso came with the plan to use taxes and the sale of public assets to recover Scranton's from its fiscal distress?
You'll have to ask Mr. Omaroso that.
Um, when he came with this plan, I'm, well, I'm asking, were you, the city council, who signed off on this plan, aware of this?
I was on council at the time when the first plane first came, but go ahead, finish your statement.
Were there any other persons here who were at the city council?
Mr. St. Fleur, as I told Mr. Bolus, this is your comment period.
Sure.
If you have questions, submit them in writing. Otherwise, this is your comment period.
Oh, so this is not for, ask questions, it's the comments?
It's not a question-answer period, no it's not.
Okay.
It's public comment.
So, my, so my comment is that, um, if the plan for recovery concerning, you know, Scranton's financial distress included the increasing of taxes and the sale of public assets, but there's a cap on the amount of taxes you can increase, it would seem that the person who was responsible for coming with this plan was not in a position to actually advise the city of Scranton on how to recover. And if the city council signed off on this plan, it would also show gross incompetence on their part that they didn't know, they didn't know of this. So, um, currently, we're waiting for a response from the, from the city government about these taxes. The current budget states that local taxes has an overage of $10 million based on this local statute. Once we prevail in court, they will have to find that $10 million dollars from somewhere. Uh, I would state that it's obvious that the city of Scranton, the government, does not have any money, and this is just further evidence that they need to make some serious changes at the government level. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Wexler. I, I have a couple of things, uh, something that's been held over for the last week and a half. Uh, we are still trying to get, uh, our onsite meeting with the water company, our city engineer, and our DPW to the Maryfield Avenue, uh, drainage pipe. Uh, we're just waiting on the American Water Company right now. We, uh, council, uh, we're committed to be there as well as the city engineer and DPW. As soon as it's good for the American Water Company to get their people out there, uh, we'll have that, and I'll let everybody know when we set that date. Uh, Serenity, uh, the Serenity Building, we, myself, Councilman Rogan, Councilman Evans, uh, Mr. Lockwood was there as well with Scranton Times, uh, Chief Graziano, and some members of the Police Department took us on the tour of that building. Uh, we saw, we saw a lot that day. I think, uh, you know, well, I'll probably speak on it, uh, that building, uh, as I can tell you right now, is housing some serious, serious equipment, uh, some valuable equipment. And I just want to give you a rundown of how we got to where we are right now today. Uh, so, because this has been going on for, for, for a while now, well over a year. Uh, the federal government has been letting us use that building to house some of our, our, our sensitive equipment, our climate, uh, control equipment that just can't be out in the elements. We've been using that, uh, from them. Uh, now that they want to sell the building, they couldn't sell it, they want to give it to us. Uh, we had Highland, the Highland Group go through, and they had some, uh, costly needs to the building and some, uh, recommend, costly recommendations for the building. We applied for a grant. The grant was, wasn't actually, uh, received by us yet, so there really wasn't anything we could do. The city just didn't have the on-hand cash to, to go ahead and accept that, that building and, uh, and put money from the general funds into it. Uh, so, the city went and we tried to go a different route. We looked at a pole barn structure, uh, which we were going to place behind the Police Department. The estimate, the estimates for that came back at close to $1 million, and the building was going to be nowhere near the structure that the, uh, Serenity Building is going to be. It was actually going to only have a 20-year shelf life for that building at $900,000. Uh, so now, we get the grant, we have the grant in front of us right now, uh, for $250,000. What that grant would cover, as of right now, the way we'd fix the roof and would replace the HVAC and get the water back into that building. Uh, those are the basic needs. It would completely keep all our equipment in there safe, uh, there's really no other place to put this equipment, and the other question that I, I know all five of us had was ongoing costs. Uh, I believe it was Councilman Evans who had the idea of the firehouse on Ash Street. Uh, if we sold that, put that into an escrow, uh, because the Training Department would leave Ash Street and join, uh, the, the Armory. We could sell that, set up an escrow account, we could use that to offset and, and, uh, any ongoing utility costs, uh, for that building. We put in LED lights, we put in a, a way better efficient, uh, heating system, we're talking, uh, we're going to get a lot more for my money for that bill, for the Ash, uh, you, I'm, I'm not wealthy, I'm very sick, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get through this, uh, the Ash Street Firehouse. Now, with that said, the issue of pollutants is still out there. Uh, that's something that is, is, we definitely have to find out, uh, what's the situation is. Uh, I mean, I can't honestly see myself, uh, going forward with something if we were going to inherit something that was just not, not safe. So, uh, you know, we'll, I'll do my research into this this week, but overall, let me just say that that building was, it's, it's in sound structure, it does need some, uh, does need roof, it does need the heating, the ventilation, the air conditioning, but that's all going to be covered by this initial grant with more grants to follow for other Something else I want to touch on was the pre-arrest drug treatment program right now that we are going to get moving with the Scranton Police Department, was Carl Graziano's, Chief Carl Graziano's, uh, brainchild. And I think it's a very good program, uh, and there's going to be more coming out of that within the next couple of weeks. I think Scranton Times already has an article out about it, kind of, uh, encapsulating everything. Uh, but it's, it is to steer people out of jail and into treatment. Uh, too, too many times, and if anybody, I'm sure it's such a, a problem right now, and, you know, I'll use the word epidemic, that it's almost touched everybody's life. And they're not necessarily criminals, they're people that need help, and this is a way that we can get the people that need help instead of getting them to stare at, uh, a jail cell, which really isn't going to help them, they're just going to get out, it's because they're going to have a harder time finding a job, and that's going to lead to more depression, it's going to lead to more drugs. So, this is a very good, very progressive program to, uh, to keep people out of jail, keep their record clear, and get them what they really need. They don't need, they don't need more trouble in life, they need treatment. Uh, so I'm very excited to, uh, to get more into that as the weeks to follow. Uh, finally, I know I've had, uh, I've had some, a lot of negative things to say about, uh, Al Baskov the last year or so, with his, I disagree with a lot of his business decisions, but that by no means should deter the fact, what he did to the city, uh, his faith that he had in our city, and the jobs and the people that he employed, and, and as we know, he, uh, he is not well on this day, and I just want to send my love and prayers out to him and his family, uh, in this most difficult time. Uh, that's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, um, a couple items. First, I, I just want to say, some of the comments made by one of the speakers attacking a councilman's wife tonight were completely out of line. Um, you could come here and attack the five of us all you want, um, but our wives and our families should not be part of the, the public discussion, um, and I think you handled it appropriately, Mr. Wexler. I think he was, uh, completely out of line, um, and it's certainly not appropriate, um, for our meetings. Um, I'd also agree with what Mr. Perry said about Mr. Baskov, um, we, I would like to wish him, wish him well as well. Nobody would, um, the cancer diagnosis is something you wouldn't wish on your worst enemy. Um, I also have had my differences with Mr. Baskov regarding city issues, um, but, uh, again, our, our hearts go out to him and his family as well. Um, the Serenity Building, as Mr. Perry mentioned, um, a number of us did tour the building this week, and I know, uh, Mr. Wexler did previous week, um, I thought it was a very eye-opening tour. First of all, just to see some of the equipment that the Police Department has that, um, I, I think most of us didn't even realize, um, we had, and hopefully we'll never need to use it, um, this is, you know, equipment to disable bombs, um, gear for riots and active shooter situations, which, again, hopefully will, will never be used, but it, we need to have it. Um, the tour was very eye-opening, especially regarding the condition of the building. I expected the building to be in much worse shape than it actually was. Um, you know, it's not pretty cosmetically going through, it certainly needs a coat of paint, um, and some, some touching up here and there, but it's a very solid building. And as Mr. Perry mentioned, the cost of just building a new building to, to store our equipment, um, would cost more than the ongoing with, with this property. And additionally, um, I agree, we, we do need to get the documentation on the environmental issue. I do know Chief Graziano did mention at one of our caucuses that there are no envi, there aren't any major environmental issues at that property. I believe it was a neighboring property, um, where there were environmental issues. I think that was reported on also, but we'll, we'll get to, before final vote next week, um, that's something we, we certainly should get. And finally, on that project, um, we did receive an email from the president of the Hill Neighborhood Association, and their, their members seem to be in support of the project, mainly because they don't want a vacant building in their neighborhood. Um, and the increased police presence by having a police substation, um, is something that, that will only help the residents of the Hill section. Um, finally, this is a little bit off-topic of items that I would normally talk about, um, but WNEP had a piece on last night, and it was, uh, reported again today regarding the new Harrison Avenue Bridge. Um, the State Representative Kevin Hagerty, um, is proposing a bill to name it after Vice President Biden. Um, I love Vice President Biden as much as almost every other Scrantonian, um, but this bridge was actually already named, um, and it's named after a veteran. Going back, I believe it was three or four years ago, we had a caucus right here in the, in these chambers with representatives from PennDOT regarding this project, and we asked if it could be named after veterans or a veteran. Senator Blake, um, and his staff took that request and ran with it. I knew a bill was proposed, um, I didn't realize it actually became law, and obviously State Representative Hagerty didn't either. Um, earlier today, I did speak with, uh, representatives from PennDOT and representatives from Senator Blake's office, and they did provide me with a copy of, um, what was a Senate bill, which is actually now a law because it was signed in. Um, this is Senate Bill 890 from the 2015-2016 session, um, and it was actually a standalone bill, um, so it wasn't added on to some larger package. This was done all on its own, um, and it reads Colonel Frank Duffy Memorial Bridge Designation Act of October 30th, 2015. Not going to read the entire, or, the entire act, but some of the highlights are Section 1, Colonel Frank Duffy Memorial Bridge, Findings and Declarations. The General Assembly finds and declares as follows. Prior to serving his country in World War I, Colonel Frank Duffy, known as the Fighting Colonel, was well-respected in Scranton. He served as the president of the Scranton Engineers Club and head of the Delaware Lackawanna and Western Railroad. After the United States entered World War I, Colonel Duffy formed Company F of the 103rd Engineers. On August 18th, 1918, Colonel Duffy was tragically killed from an explosion of an enemy shell and was buried in a small French village. Colonel Duffy was the highest-ranking soldier from Lackawanna County, killed in World War I. Designation: The bridge carrying State Route 6011, Harrison Avenue, over Roaring Brook in the city of Scranton in Lackawanna County, to be constructed on rack after the effective date of this section, is hereby designated the Colonel Frank Duffy Memorial Bridge. The Department of Transportation shall erect and maintain appropriate signs to indicate the designation under subsection 2. And it says this act will take effect in 60 days. Um, so with my colleagues' agreement, I, I, I think we need to reach out to Representative Hagerty. I would like to send a formal letter asking that he rescinds his bill to name the Frank Duffy Memorial Bridge, um, the Joe Biden Bridge, and look for another way to honor Vice President Biden, which I do agree needs, needs to be done, and he should be honored for his achievements, um, but those achievements wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for heroes like Frank Duffy. So, if my colleagues agree, if we could send that letter to Representative Hagerty's office, and that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. Uh, briefly on the topic to decriminalize marijuana possession, uh, while I haven't fully formed an opinion just yet, I think that is definitely something that needs full discussion and a, and a full conversation, so I think we'll continue to talk about that. Um, I would like to offer some brief comments on what I think the role of city council might be. City council, of course, is a legislative branch, we're not the executive branch, and we are certainly not an extension of the administration. All of us on city council have full-time jobs outside of this position, so an 80-to-90-hour work week is not abnormal to me or my colleagues. That's not a complaint, that's just a fact, but it does offer some perspective. That's not a complaint, that's just a fact, but it does offer some perspective. As my colleagues and past councils have noted many times before, council is far more than the two- or three-hour meeting every Thursday. In fact, most of what we do is beyond this meeting, beyond these walls, and beyond this building. Councilman President Wexler last week touched on a few success stories of city council, and I'd like to expand a little bit on what's been happening over the last two-plus years. For example, we took a proposed two-year tax abatement program for new homes only, and expanded it to three years, and included condo, townhouses, and apartment-to-condominium conversions. Conversations are ongoing with several developers about condo conversions and new condos, and I would expect within the year there will be some news along that front because of this ordinance, resulting in a dramatic increase in our tax base and more homeownership downtown. We created a program for first-time homebuyers with the proceeds of the foreclosure registration fee, paid by the banks and returned to the community at no cost to the taxpayers, and its early success is very encouraging. We stepped up and finally passed legislation to move SAPA forward after it was left languishing for several years with no hope that it would ever happen. We created the Quality of Life Tickets, a great idea that is an effective tool in fighting blight, but we also recognize that it still needs some improvement and tweaking, and it's something we'll be looking at more. We wrote the new rental registration ordinance that focuses on registration and will save property owners' money while creating revenue for LIPS for the cost of the program and increasing refuse bill collection at the same time. We continue to endorse the idea of using a third-party vendor to gather data to increase the level of rentals registered, working alongside city employees. We created a 10% discount for the refuse bill, which will help property owners and increase cash flow to the city. We have been at the forefront of pension reform. In fact, those words were mentioned in these chambers by this councilman hundreds and hundreds of times. Because of our prodding and insistence, there has been actual reform, more reform to come, and additional pension reforms soon to be determined. We amended it, and we broke a stalemate on the contractors' legislation with new legislation on the horizon for electrical contractors that have been brought forth by council. We are soon to be online with a program called Granicus, a paperless engender tool that will bring additional transparency and efficiency to city council. And tonight, we will vote yes on the final reading of legislation as reducing the real estate transfer tax, to my knowledge, is the first tax reduction of any kind in the city of Scranton in decades. And there are many other issues that we deal with on a daily basis, but more needs to be done, absolutely. We will continue to lead on the following issues: A county-wide reassessment; the proper appropriation of the sewer authority sale proceeds; a new zoning code; a new condemnation policy; a new vendors' ordinance; a full review of every fee the city currently charges, while looking to reduce and eliminate many more; the completion of the refuse study; the completion of the stormwater study; renewing the idea sessions and addressing the nonprofits per this council's recommendation in the revised recovery plan. And I'm sure there'll be many more things that we haven't even thought of yet. So, that's all I have for this evening, but every once in a while, we need to tell our story. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahan?
Yes, thank you. Just on the updating the zoning ordinance, we received an email from Denise Prowell, who kinda led the charge on implementing SAPA two or three years ago, and apparently the county's regional planning division is now taking steps to work with SAPA communities. They're assuming administration of the SAPA plan, they hired two additional people in their office, and they are going to coordinate, seeking funding through DCED to update these zoning ordinances in conformance with the SAPA plan. So, it was good news there. Just an update on the street lighting project. Within the last few days, a total of 40 fixtures were retrofitted Mulberry-Davis-Linden Street, and work continues in the south and east sections of the city. And as we travel to the different neighborhood meetings, it seems like the street lighting project is being received very favorably. We did receive a request last week that I mentioned about a resident who wanted a no parking sign on Silox Street, so we did send that to Mr. Poshus, our city engineer, and we'll wait to hear from him on that. I did attend the Oakmont Neighborhood Association meeting on Monday along with Councilman Wexler, and we listened to a number of different concerns from residents. The main concern was in regards to cars being broken into, a rash of crimes in that area. And Chief Graziano was there, and he addressed many of these concerns. Some additional things that were discussed were putting up neighborhood watch signs and reflectors on the stop signs in this section of the city. I'd also like to send, if we could, correspondence asking the city to make sure to include Oakmont in their lighting assessment. As I was driving up there, the street lighting is very sporadic and very dangerous driving at night. Also, there are several streets that we are going to need to submit to the DPW for pothole patching and to be included on any future paving list. Again, several complaints this week regarding faded street signs or a lack of street signs throughout the city. I'd again like to propose that the city develop some sort of street sign replacement program, a concerted effort, a strategic effort to replace these street signs throughout the city, whether it's on the website where people can submit a faded street sign, or one that has been taken down or badly damaged, or even a hotline where residents can call in and report these damaged, faded street signs. And this is definitely a public safety issue, and it's one of the number-one things I hear about each week, so be getting in touch with our DPW director to see if we can work something out there. We got more good news on the street lighting project. The city is going to receive a rebate from PP&amp;L for the energy-efficient lighting project. Right now, the amount is estimated at $141,000. Also received a complaint about a pile of debris at Yesu Lane and East Mountain Road, a really large pile, residents are concerned about that, so if we could send correspondence to the DPW to possibly clean that up. In regards to the issues in the letters and the questions that we sent about the sale of the sewer authority, the $12 million. Apparently, Councilman Wexler had mentioned in caucus and earlier tonight that him and Mr. Evans are gonna meet next Friday with Mr. Shrive to discuss these questions. I am disappointed by this. I think that this meeting should be held in a public caucus. We all have questions for Mr. Shrive, we've submitted those questions, but I don't think that a meeting should be held behind closed doors. This issue is too important, there are too many questions, too many concerns, and I do feel like it should be a public caucus, and that should be held. So, I would hope that this meeting could be held in caucus, out in the public. And that is all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. Just to give my response, and I shouldn't say response, but in my opinion, this meeting is the best way to get the answers. The questions have been floating around really since the beginning of January. We have not gotten any responses yet. In my opinion, as council president, I feel that this is the best way to get the answers. The answers that we get, we will share them with everyone, but like I said, in my concern, I'm not so concerned with the questions, I'm concerned with the answers that we get. And this, this is my first attempt to get the answers that we need. And as we discussed in caucus, if we're not satisfied with the responses that we received after that meeting, we'll have to change our tactics to get the answers that we like. As Mr. Gahan said, we attended the Oakmont Neighborhood Meeting, and we go to a lot of these meetings, and it was an amazing turnout there. There was over 50 residents at the meeting, and they actually found someone to become the new president, and I'd like to congratulate Jesse Rozell, who stepped up, become president of the Oakmont Neighborhood Association. I formerly was a neighborhood president. It's a difficult job, people expect a lot of you, but when you help them out, it's very rewarding. And as I told Jesse, if you look at it as more of a social thing than a work thing, you'll be very successful at it, and I think he'll do a great job. I spent a lot of time with the Chief Graziano this weekend, I attended the neighborhood summit meeting. It was very well-attended also, there was representatives from North Scranton, the Hill Neighborhood Association, South Scranton, West Scranton, the Plot, Green Ridge, Oakmont, and also East Mountain. As Councilman Rogan mentioned, I did reach out to the Hill Neighborhood President there to get her feedback that she had received concerning the Sorenti Center. As tonight as we're sitting here, we're talking about Sorenti Center, and I think my other councilman had mentioned it, there was a site at Sorenti that was used as the motor pool, where oil changes were done, transmission fluid was changed. That site is not a part of what we're talking about here. That site was separated from the current Sorenti Center and sold off at a separate auction years ago. So, there is a study in terms of the environmental impact at the Sorenti Center, but it's more of less, it's what would be in a garage or something like that. The brownfield per se, and I'm sure if it really is a brownfield, that is not a part of this, this piece of property. Getting back to the Neighborhood Summit, Chief Graziano reported on a couple of different items that he's working on. They have installed some speed-timing devices, and they're planning on buying two more in the area. And what the speed-timing devices do is they collect data on traffic. And in Westside, during a three-month period, 90% of the vehicles were traveling within the speed limit. So, we get a lot of, we get a lot of complaints and concerns about speeding, and justifiably so. So, these areas where we get these complaints, we'll be able to put these monitoring devices in there and collect real data, and then put some, implement some real plans to battle the speeding there. The chief is also working with the county, they're developing what they're calling an active shooter program, and that program would inform departments and citizens what to do in case of a shooting in a public place. Unfortunately, this is where we're at in society now, that we have to be concerned about shootings in public places. Although we can't combat these random acts of violence, we can try to be as prepared for them as possible, and I congratulate the chief on getting this program going. He's also planning on establishing a junior police academy for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. This would be a seven-week program with one hour a week, trying to reach out to the kids. And they're also gonna conduct their normal citizens' police academy that they're doing. At the meeting the other night, our chaplain was there. Right now, the chaplain, there's adding four more chaplains to our program. The chaplain program in Scranton is becoming a model for these programs across the country. The last class that they gave, I think the chief said a chaplain from Nebraska came here to take advantage of the training. The chief sat down with the chief of police of Baltimore at the Martin Luther King event and compared notes, and our program actually is ahead of what Baltimore is doing right now. Very progressive, active plan for our Scranton Police Department to participate in this. And the chief is also working on using a record management system once again to control trends and analyze trends in terms of crime-fighting. Also at the meeting, besides Chief Graziano, was District Attorney Shane Scanlon, and I did, I did approach them, you and I have had some Facebook conversation about this, and I did approach them about what their opinion was on the decriminalization of marijuana. Both of them felt that it's something that should be discussed, and they will follow along with what legislators say, but they personally both were against it. Both men expressed that they have a fear that it's a gateway drug, and the opinions that, that's the opinions that they have. So, I think they're open to discussion, and we'll have to, you know, go from there. But DA Scanlon had some very disturbing data about opioid deaths in the Scranton, Lacuana County over the past couple of years. In 2014, there was less than 40 opioid deaths. 2015, there were 69. In 2016, there were 99 opioid deaths, and there are 17 autopsies pending. The opioid crisis, as we can see, is becoming, it's always been a serious problem, but it's becoming worse. Well, I'm not saying it's linked to anything else, but it is just a problem that we have to, we have to address. And speaking with the chief, he is open to discussion, and some of the statistics that you presented, we'll take a look at that and see what they mean.
What does council call it?
We'll see what we can do, we'll see what we can do. But he, the chief is very good at stressing the use of statistics and analyzing, so, and he's open to discussion, so we'll see where that gets here from there. I'd just like to touch, our councilman had mentioned Mr. Boscov, and we heard tonight there's a fear if Mr. Boscov passes, what could happen. I think Mr. Boscov has left a legacy, especially in this city. If you go over to Boscov's, it's always busy over there, there's people constantly there. And I would hope that his survivors would be able to carry out his legacy. Mr. Boscov took a chance on Scranton when nobody else was interested in doing it, and we owe him, we owe him a debt of gratitude. He owes us a little bit of money, but that's two different things, and we're working on that as well. But our hearts and prayers do go out to Mr. Boscov at this time for his family. And that's all I have. Thank you.
5B for introduction, an ordinance closing and vacating portions of South Irving Avenue and Crown Avenue between Saginaw Street and Connell Street.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Jessica L. Boils Esquire, 801 Prescott Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as city solicitor and acting director of Human Resources, Assistant Business Administrator, effective January 23rd, 2017. Ms. Boils will be replacing Jason A. Shrive Esquire, who resigned as city solicitor.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, I would just like to say that I think this is an excellent appointment. I've worked with Jessica on a couple of different projects over the last few months. I find her to be very capable and very professional, and I know she'll be working closely with our department, and I'm very anxious for her to get started and hit the ground running. I congratulate her. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title file of the Council Number 85, 2017, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the local share account grant funding through the Pennsylvania Gaming Local Share Account in the amount of $250,000 awarded through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, and to execute the local share account grant contract and disburse the funds for the conversion of the Sorenti Memorial Army Reserve Center, also known as CSM Samuel P. Sorenti U.S. Army Reserve Center located at 1801 Pine Street, into an emergency services center to be used by the Scranton Police Department and for storage of large, expensive vehicles and equipment that cannot be safely stored in any other facility currently owned or operated by the city.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second. On the question?
On the question, I think I'll weigh in, and I know it was discussed earlier, but I will say that our site visit last Monday was very enlightening for me. I still have some concerns about the recurring cost of the utilities and the future maintenance of the building, but I definitely feel that this could be minimized by the sale of Agent 15 on Ash Street and creating utilities or maintenance account dedicated to this building with the proceeds. It's anticipated that this $250,000 grant will cover the roof, the plumbing, and new heating systems. With new high-efficiency heating systems and a plan to convert to LED lighting throughout the building, I feel utility costs could be covered by the sale of Agent 15 for at least 10 years or more, and will not be a major expense after that. Building really is in good condition. Once the major and most important issues are corrected with the grant, I think the remaining renovations are very doable, and can be done over time and in a cost-effective manner, as grant money becomes available with little or no impact to the taxpayers. I have previously asked that the idea of a pole barn behind the police station be reviewed, and I'm comfortable with the idea or the fact that it was fully vetted and found to be cost-prohibitive. With that said, this building gives the police department far more in terms of space and potential than the pole barn concept would have. I would like to thank Chief Graziano, Captain Dennis Lukasevich, and Detective Sergeant Robert Martin for the tour. Their knowledge and their vision for this space was really quite impressive, so I will be voting yes for this tonight.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration- Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 82, 2017, amending file of the Council Number 6, 1976, entitled, "In Ordinance as Amended, Imposing a Tax for General Revenue Purposes on the Transfer of Real Property Situate Within the City of Scranton, Prescribing and Regulating the Method of Evidencing the Payment of Such Tax, Conferring Powers and Imposing Duties Upon Certain Persons, and Providing Penalties by Imposing the Rate of the Realty Transfer Tax at Two and Four Tens Percent for Calendar Year 2017, and the Same Shall Remain in Full Force and Effect Annually Thereafter."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. Councilman Evans made a mention of this. Although this isn't a great deal of tax cut, it is still a tax cut in the city of Scranton, a tax cut in the city of Scranton, and this is a symbol of more things to come in the future.
I would agree wholeheartedly, and I think next year, we could look at finally bringing down the wage on real estate taxes if things continue on the track that we're currently on, and that would certainly be my hope.
Yes, and I don't share what was said earlier this evening at the podium about being a massive tax increase next year. Right now, our preliminary figures of what we look at and where we're at in terms of our plan, I just don't see that in the cards. I don't see that happen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 108, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into the Department of the Army, license number as noted, granting the city of Scranton use of the government's premises located at former CSM Samuel P. Sorrento U.S. Army Reserve Center, 1801 Pine Streets, Scranton, PA 18510.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 109, 2017, authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for the installation of the solar-powered, two-sided rectangular, rapid-flashing beacon system, new crosswalk, and signing. The Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority plans to have these installed as part of their safety improvement project at Elm Street and Lackawanna River Heritage Trail intersection.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. First of all, I think it's important that we continue to institute safety measures in the areas of the trail throughout the city. And I just want to note what was already reported in the paper, but maybe some people didn't see. There was a report that was just issued that the use of the trail by people in Lackawanna County and outside of Lackawanna County has risen from 128,000 people in 2009 to 315,000 in 2016. That's a 146% increase. Researchers from a consultant, Urban Partners, also found that direct economic activity, ranging from people buying water, sandwiches, shoes, bicycles, grew from 28.3 million in 2009 to 64.6 million in 2016. That's a 120% increase. So I think it's important that the city continue to work with the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority, continue to make it safe and accessible to people, and continue to add to the trail, spur economic development, and possibly develop more of our riverfront. Thank you.
On the question, it's very important that we continue to support this type of enterprise. It tells you what kind of city we are and what kind of city we want to be, and also lends to our quality of life. So I congratulate Natalie again on all her hard work and all she's accomplished, and this really is a very, very positive situation for our city, and I look forward to getting lights down there and making it even safer for all the people who use it.
It also would tie in very well with the proposed new development along the Lackawanna River. We talked about the trail before. It is making Scranton a walking and biking city, bringing opportunities that really weren't here a few years ago. And as we just heard, it is well-used, it's free, which is always good, and the thing that I'm impressed about it is people take care of it. For the most part, it's trash-free, it's graffiti-free, and people are taking pride in it.
And most importantly, this will enhance the public safety of those who use it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 110, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement binding between the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority and the city of Scranton pertaining to the maintenance of the solar-powered, two-sided rectangular, rapid-flashing beacon system at the intersection of Elm Street and the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 111, 2017, a resolution of the city of Scranton supporting the proposal to designate a portion of Pennsylvania Route 6 as a Pennsylvania byway.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned.